I'd like to call the order. The November 20th of 24, Planning Commission, please call all, roll please.
Commissioner Bowden.
Here.
Commissioner Woodard.
Here.
Commissioner Michelle.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Shook.
Here.
Commissioner Stachil.
Here.
Commissioner Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Grabowski.
Here.
Chairperson Taylor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. We're next had the Planning Commission's creed and approval of the agenda by Commissioner Staudt.
Thank you. The Newport News Planning Commission is mandated by state law and its members are appointed by city council. Section 115.2-2210 of the Code of Virginia states in part that every locality shall create a planning commission in order to promote the orderly development of the locality and its environment. The statutory purpose is to improve the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the citizens and to plan the future development of the communities. In serving this statutory purpose, the commission invites the comments at the public hearing of its interested citizens of matters before it and welcomes your presence. Chairperson Taylor, I move we adopt the agenda before us.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. And we accept it. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
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 The agenda is accepted. We now have the invocation by Commissioner Michelle.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for teaching us that citizenship is based on the principle of loving our neighbor. And so we thank you for the opportunity that we have to practice that kind of citizenship today with one another as a community. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next we have the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Wood.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ah, she's here. Next we have we have a very special presentation that we want to do to one of our past commissioners, Commissioners Chair. That is Resolution of Appreciation for Ms. Sharon L. Fox. It's not on your agenda, but we're gonna do that now. We got you here though, right?
You did.
I'm gonna stand here.
Where do you want me to stand?
Right.
Okay.
Resolution of Appreciation presented to Sharon L. Fox. Whereas Sharon L. Fox was appointed to the Newport News Planning Commission January 16th, 2016. Yeah. And whereas Sharon served as Planning Commission continuously for two full terms until January 15th, 2024. And whereas Sharon served as chairperson from January 22nd, I'm sorry, January 2022 until January 2024. During the time, during her tenure as chairperson, the Lee Hall Area Plan was approved and adopted by city council. And she served as vice chairperson from January 2020 until January 2022. And as whereas during her tenure on the City Planning Commission, she served on the One City, One Future Oversight Committee, the Greater Hilton Area Area Plan Citizen Advisory Committee. And during her tenure, often plans and studies the City Planning Commission recommended approval and the city council adopted where the joint was the Joint Base Langley-Eustis Joint Land Use Study. Say that out loud, fool. The Monster Ridley Choice Neighborhood Transformation Plan, the One City, One Future 2024 Comprehensive Plan, and the Denby-Warrick Area Plan. There's more. Whereas Sharon Sharon L. Fox served wisely diligently as a member of the City Planning Commission with keen sensitivity, passion, and understanding of both on the public interest and the private property rights. Whereas the perception, insights, and the character brought to the position by Ms. Sharon L. Fox were invaluable in serving in many complex decisions facing the city in Newport News. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Newport News City Planning Commission that it expresses its sincere and grateful appreciation to Ms. Sharon L. Fox for her able, tireless efforts as member of the Newport News Planning Commission. It acknowledges the importance of Sharon L. Fox in the work of the City Planning Commission and the many contributions to the activities of the commission. A copy of this resolution is presented to Sharon. And will be evidence of our appreciation effective, I'm sorry, afforded here by the Newport News City Planning Commission. Signed by City Mayor, Anchor, Shiller, Colister, Executive Secretary, and all the planning commissioners.
Oh, well, thank you so much. Thank you.
You also get your own gavel to beat on something.
I wish I'd known I would've had somebody take a picture.
Well, we can take a picture.
Will I hold this for you?
You would, that's heavy. And I want to just say, I didn't write a speech because that's why she didn't tell me.
You want to read some more of this?
I'm gonna read that. Come over here with me, yeah.
I think I'm gonna get the rest of the planning commission behind you.
Good.
There you go. One, two, three. Okay.
Thank you. I just would like to say that the 16 years total that I spent on the Planning Commission were some of the most rewarding of my life, working with Sheila and Flora, my fellow commissioners. And the staff has just been incredible. And I wish you all the best as you continue doing what is the best thing for our city. Thank you, Lynn, everyone. I appreciate it. And thank you, Michael.
Good? I'll sit in the chair.
Somebody help her out. Can you help her?
We're gonna put it in. Wow. Sharon, thank you so very, very much. I believe in that I read over it a couple of times and I still can all of it down. So I'm sure there's much more in you that we look forward to working with you throughout the city. And thank you again. I don't think Sharon remember, when you started Sharon, I came off the Planning Commission. So that's been, wow. Yes, so. God, you glory. Anyway, thank you very much. That wasn't on the original agenda, but it was on mine. It was something that we needed to do. So my mom always says, give her her flowers where she can try, she can still smell them. So thank you, Sharon. The next item on our agenda is the minutes. Does everyone had a copy of it? Was received a copy? Any questions? Any corrected changes? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor of the minutes being accepted as is presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. On our agenda today, we only have one major item that we need to talk about. So I will declare the public hearing open. And the item before us is Plan Amendment for the Greater Hilton Area Plan, PLN, Tag 2024, Tag 0005. And that will be presented to us by Ms. Angela Hopkins. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As stated, I'll be presenting an overview of the Greater Hilton Area Plan. The planned area has a total of 2.8 square miles. It's bounded by J. Clyde Morris to the north, CSX Railroad to the east, Government Ditch to the south, and James River to the west. This plan serves as an update to the Hilton Area Neighborhood Plan that was adopted in 1998. The planned boundaries have been expanded to include contiguous neighborhoods and commercial areas north of the original 1998 plan. Our six-phase planning process began in the fall of 2020 and will conclude hopefully in the fall of 2024. A very robust community engagement process occurred over the span of the first two years of this project. It included a community survey, community meeting, a series of meetings with focus groups, including one with the youth, as well as interviews with business and property owners. There were also meetings of the Citizen Advisory Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee. In terms of land use acreage, parks and open space and residential are the largest, two largest land use types, with each comprising over one-third of the Greater Hilton area. The vision of the plan stresses the importance of Greater Hilton's historical and cultural significance, its natural features, its neighborhoods, and its businesses. In order for us to describe the existing conditions, the issues and opportunities, the Greater Hilton area was divided into four neighborhood sectors as seen on this map. A thorough analysis of the information, data, and feedback gathered during our various outreach efforts identified a series of themes. These overarching themes reflect the values and the desires shared by the residents, the business owners, and the stakeholders within Greater Hilton. The four themes that emerged were character preservation and enhancement, economic empowerment, safe environment and accessibility, and community connections. These overarching themes guided the development of the goals and the strategies that are the substance of the Greater Hilton Area Plan. Because Greater Hilton is predominantly residential, preservation and enhancement is fundamental to maintaining the character of the area. The focus is on preserving the historic character of Hilton Village and the residential neighborhoods, as well as enhancing streetscape elements along Warwick Boulevard that will unify the Greater Hilton area. Goals under economic empowerment seek to provide opportunities to attract investment into the area and support and strengthen the existing businesses. Specific opportunities include creating an arts district, repurposing the former UPS Call Center, and reinvesting in and redeveloping of other vacant properties. Creating safe, functional places for people to walk and bike would have a profound impact on the health and the well-being of the Greater Hilton residents. The plan strives to create a transportation network designed to maximize the use of transit, pedestrian, and bicycle amenities, and shifting to more sustainable modes of transportation. Other goals focus on enhancing cultural and recreational facilities for both the local community and visitors to enjoy. The plan includes several future land use map recommendations that support the community's vision for Greater Hilton. This is the proposed future land use map indicating where those proposed changes are. Some of them are minor corrections and others reinforce neighborhood character and enable redevelopment appropriate to the surroundings as called for in the plan. The next several slides will take a closer look at each of these areas identified on the map. The first area is Area A, which is generally located between Warwick Boulevard and Gatewood Road. It was determined these properties were mapped incorrectly. Basically, the land use designations were placed in the wrong place. So parcel one contains properties designated as community facilities are now recommended for low-density residential and the adjacent properties that are designated as low-density residential are recommended for community facilities. These proposed designations correct the inadvertent mapping error. Area B is generally located between Gatewood Road, Harpersville Road, and the CSX Railroad. Parcel two contains properties that are designated parks and recreation and community facilities respectfully and are recommended for utilities to support the existing HRSD pump station and any potential expansion of that facility. Parcel three contains one property that is designated neighborhood commercial and is recommended for community facilities to reflect the longstanding 40-year presence of the church on the site. Parcel four contains properties that are designated parks and recreation and are recommended for neighborhood commercial to reflect the existing commercial uses and to encourage and attract new commercial investment into the area.
Can I ask you a question? What is, what's included in utilities? In the, in the, I mean, what, what, what would be, you know, what would, what would be included in utilities?
Pump stations, electrical substations.
Okay.
Did that?
I just didn't know we normally did that.
Okay. Parcel five contains properties that are designated parks and recreation and recommended for urban residential to preserve the existing residential use as well as support the addition of any new housing in the area. Area C is generally located along Harpersville Road between Warwick Boulevard and Gatewood Road. Parcel six and seven contains properties that are designated community facilities and are recommended for urban residential to preserve the existing residential character. Area D is located between Old Harpersville Road, Colonial Place, and Logan Place. Parcel eight contains a property that is designated utilities is now recommended for medium-density residential to maintain and protect the residential character of that property. Parcel nine contains properties that are designated medium-density and are now recommended for urban residential to support the existing pattern of development and provide the flexibility for redevelopment opportunities and housing densities that will complement the surrounding residential communities. Parcel 10 contains a property that is designated mixed-use is recommended for utilities to support the existing city pump station, which is not envisioned to change. Area E is generally located between Warwick Boulevard and Nelson Drive. Parcel 11 contains properties that are designated community commercial and are recommended for mixed-use to attract new economic and/or residential investment into the area. Area F is located along Warwick Boulevard between Main Street and Hopkins Streets. Parcel 12 contains properties that are designated office and are recommended for neighborhood commercial to preserve the commercial character of the Warwick Boulevard corridor. Parcel 13 contains a property that is designated neighborhood commercial and recommended for community facilities to reflect the 60-year presence of the church located in historic Hilton Village. And the last proposed change is Area G, which is generally located along Warwick Boulevard between Hopkins Street and Rivermont Drive. Parcel 14 contains a property that is designated neighborhood commercial and is being recommended for community facilities to reflect the existing police museum and community education and outreach center. And parcel 15 contains a property that is designated industrial and is recommended for high-density residential to support the continuation of a residential use on this property. In conclusion, the Greater Hilton Area Plan serves as a comprehensive framework for guiding the future. It sets a clear vision and provides a roadmap that outlines the steps necessary to realize that vision. And it aligns with the goals and the objectives of the city's One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend the city council adoption of Plan Amendment, PLN-2024-0005, Greater Hilton Area Plan. Are there any questions?
I just have one.
Yes, sir.
For Area G, was there any consideration on making that more low-density versus high-density? Because we've already been talking about the number of high-density units that's already in Newport News.
Not in this particular area. And during this, the survey, the residents kind of wanted more density where they could in areas that were already there. So this area already has a concentration of housing, so it just made sense to, to continue that.
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, because right now it is individual housing, correct?
No. It's a mobile home park right now.
It's a trailer park.
Okay, all right, I'm thinking, I'm thinking a little bit farther up, okay.
Yeah, it's a mobile home park.
I had a question about it also. Can you go back? Is it possible Angela, go back to that slide G?
Sure.
Let me show.
That would be typically.
Yeah.
Have industrial.
That's what I thought about.
Right, see, that's the museum area. The backside, right. Yeah, no, I was thinking the block of. Okay. Part of the library. You have any questions?
Oh, yeah, I have a question. So going back to this Area G, don't we typically put industrial along the train tracks? Not always? I guess Port Warwick's not. And the other side of the train tracks is not.
And you're not right against the train tracks, you still have a park.
Yeah, well, you have a road, I mean, okay.
You got an access road between you and the train tracks.
So is this like, is it kind of reactive to what's there? I mean, is that a little, is that a slippery slope if things start to change? Like that police station, you know, gets sold and it's no longer a community building? Then. Do you see what I'm asking?
But we would want it to stay a museum and a community building. If it gets sold, we would have to reevaluate it at that time.
Right.
But the plan is saying that the community facility is what we would want to see there in the future.
So it's a little reactive because we're looking at what's there.
We're knowing that what's there, we do not want to change.
So does that go back to Angela's opening statement where there's a lot of the assignments? Or we're swapping them back to where they're getting the original, what they should have been assigned to?
Not necessarily. Some things we want to remain the way it is, so we're identifying it as the way it is right now. Some things we want changed and we're identifying that as something different. Like, for instance, the mobile home park, if it's ever redeveloped, it would be redeveloped, hopefully, as high-density residential.
Okay, okay. Any, yes, Commissioner Bowden.
Mrs. Hopkins, appreciate the presentation. In reference to Area F, the adopted versus proposed, that corridor in Hilton Village that are sort of like, I would call them row houses almost. The difference between a current designation as office versus community commercial, I can, many of those are actually used as residential, residential homes or residential rentals. Is that, is residential fall within the neighborhood commercial category?
It's two different things.
Yeah, it's, it's two different.
It's two different things.
Talking about zoning, this is future land use.
This is land use.
Sorry. Yeah.
And so the zoning would allow, with the overlay for historic Hilton, allow the residential to be within the corridor.
My apologies, thank you. Any other questions? I have no cards or is there anyone that wanted to speak that has not filled out a card? Seeing no one running to the mic, thank you, Ms. Hopkins. I'm gonna now close the public hearing and the matter is now before the commission.
Chairperson, I would like to recommend that the Planning Commission accept the recommendation of Plan Amendment, PLN, 2024-0005, the Greater Hilton Area Plan, to the city council as, as recommended.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, seeing none? Please call roll.
Commissioner Bowden.
In sport.
Commissioner Woodard.
Four.
Commissioner Michelle.
Four.
Commissioner Williams.
Four.
Commissioner Shook.
Four.
Commissioner Stachil.
Four.
Commissioner Diaz.
Four.
Commissioner Grabowski.
Four.
Commissioner Taylor.
Four.
Motion unanimous, nine to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. This mess, this matter will be heard by city council at their next meeting, December the 10th, 2024. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Ms. Hopkins, on a great presentation. The next items we have on our agenda is the Executive Secretary Report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I love that. At the December 4th, 2024 Planning Commission Public Hearing, you will hear a conditional use permit for the operation of a car wash. This is an existing auto bail at 13698 Warwick Boulevard. And a present.
As existing?
It's existing, but they're expanding and I believe they're looking to put in, they're looking to change their hours.
Change their hours. What's the address?
13698 Warwick Boulevard is at the corner of Warwick and Bland. You will also have a presentation of the Newport News Housing Study.
All on the December, is that the December 4th?
December 4th. And on December 18th, you have two special exceptions, one for a lot less than 50 feet of frontage and the other for an expansion of a non-conforming use. The Winter Circle Mazda Automotive Sales would like to expand. And then I'd like to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Well, thank you, and you as well, ma'am.
That's all I have.
Are we gonna sing Happy Birthday Now later? Oh, I'm sorry.
Why?
The next item we have on our agenda is the committee reports. Yes, it was my birthday last week and I mentioned it.
That was last week.
Committee reports.
Regulations Committee met today. We suggested presenting to the Planning Commission relocation of fencing requirements from Chapter 13 to Chapter 45, so it'll be enforceable by code enforcement. We also discussed, we just had some other general discussions without any decisions being made.
Why, why is it in Chapter 13 it can't be enforced by codes?
Because.
We'll have the zoning.
We'll have Naoka explain it.
Okay.
And explain.
I'm just curious.
And you thought you weren't gonna have anything to say?
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Good afternoon.
And you are who?
Zoning Administrator for the Department of Planning. My name's Naoka Hall. Presently, as the fence regulations are located under Chapter 13, which is housed in the Code Compliance Department under the Building Division, I'm sorry, Division, the Building Code Regulations provide an exemption for fences. Fences are not required to have permits under the building codes. So in an effort to continue to require fences to have permits in addition to manage violation matters, we are seeking to locate the fence, relocate the fence regulations from Chapter 13 to Chapter 45 for the purpose of regulations and building permit acquisition.
Well done, Ms. Hall, thank you. Thank you so very, very much. Any other? Next in the item we on our agenda? Next in the item, on our agenda, we have unfinished business? Any new business? Hearing none, seeing none? I declare this meeting adjourned.